Are you still?
Ready now.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
It's four o'clock, so we will call this meeting of the Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting to Order. For everyone online, if we, I'm amazed the mayor can read that from that far away. But if there are any technical difficulties, please be patient with us. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Acting City Attorney Hockeluck.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Protem, Mayor Collins is excused.
Great, thank you. First item on the agenda, are there any commission comments or questions? Okay, saying none, we will move on to recommendations from the Helena Citizens Council. We have someone here from the HCC.
I believe Mayor Protem, it's Patricia Bick. If she can access her mic. Patricia, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead.
With a little report from the HCC.
Yes, please.
Yes, well, we're very interested in seeing that the the bridge over at Henderson Street that we've sent you a recommendation on that project, seeing that possibly being funded through the ARPA funds. And also today you'll be considering the changes to the zoning regulations on the on the childcare facilities and the HCC also as a group has supported those changes. So, nice to be here and thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. So, for the HCC representative, I didn't catch your last name, Patricia, correct?
Just, I apologize, I removed her mic, Commissioner.
Dang it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Patricia, I'm sorry. Patricia Bick, B I K, is my name.
Ms. Bick, just a warning, I guess. So, there's a subcommittee of the commission that has been dealing with the city manager recruitment process. And the commission itself has recently engaged with a CMS here in Helena that's going to be running the recruitment process. And we thought it would probably be a good idea to meet with the Helena Citizens Council at your meeting on the 30th. And was hoping that you've got some availability there, just to give a brief presentation on the.
Yeah, I'm sure that can be arranged, yes.
Okay, so.
Council will be very interested in that process, so yeah, I'm sure they'll find time. How much time do you think you'll need?
An hour or so.
An hour, wow.
No. Ten, fifteen minutes, I would bet.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan, Mayor Protem, and the rest of the commission, just an update, I was in contact with the HCC coordinator the last couple of days. And I know Ms. Bick is probably going to find this out in the coming days, but they're working, the executive committee and the HCC coordinator are working on putting you on the agenda for the 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the HCC? Thank you, Ms. Bick.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, we have the city managers' report. We first have the Montana League of Cities and Towns 2022 resolutions for this upcoming session.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, commissioners, included in your packet, I think, whether it's electronic or paper, you've got copies of the resolutions that the league board passed and then the full membership passed at the end of conference in Kalispell. I'm not going to redo each one of them, but if you have any questions, I'll certainly attempt to answer them. But I do intend on scheduling these up for a commission meeting for adoption as the commission's policy in terms of policy positions throughout the legislative session. As you know, you can't predict everything that's going to happen in the legislature, if something unpredictable occurs, but city staff would engage the commission in direction at that time. But this at least provides citywide direction on positions that the commission has for the upcoming session. And as I said, it's been fully vetted by the Board of Directors of the League and the full membership, so it's the unanimous position across 127 cities and towns in Montana.
Any questions or comments on the league resolutions? One note I would just make, these. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor Protem, I was going to add that you're on the Board of Directors and you helped ratify this.
Yeah, it's been, I've only been on the board now for five months maybe, but have been very impressed with with the new director, Tim's successor Kelly Lynch. And would also add that these resolutions were unanimously adopted by not only the Board of Directors, which is representative of districts across area districts across the state, as well as unanimously adopted by the membership at the league conference a few weeks ago. I think that if, if anyone on the commission is interested in being of assistance to the league, I think that would be very helpful during the session. We're lucky to be, well, I guess sometimes it's a blessing and a curse, but during the session, we're luckily, lucky to be in close proximity of the Capitol. And so, available, more readily available than maybe other municipal representatives to testify where the league, it might be helpful to the league. This session, there's, you can see in the resolution, they're alluded to. So obviously, there can be a lot of issues that impact municipalities across the state. And with the governor's budget just coming out, a lot of maybe opportunities to educate on what local government actually does and what it doesn't do and what is actually within our our area of control. I think there's lots, lots more opportunity for us to work with legislators to solve issues, but we also need to be able to have access to the levers that improve access to housing and providing quality services and developing infrastructure. And the legislature has a key role in helping us do that. So, I hope all of you will consider being of support when you're available and when the league will request it of us.
So, Mayor Protem, in the near future, I think, if you have any comments, please let me know in the near future, come your way at a commission meeting. At a future meeting, probably administrative, but we'll have a discussion on the parameters of city participation in the legislative session. There's need for technical testimony, but I find that when policy discussions are taking place, it's best to have an elected official there. I did mention to Kelly Lynch that if she needs help, call. Then we'll work through whatever process you establish.
Any other items in the city manager's report? Okay, I guess, we'll go ahead and take public comments. Is there any public comment on this item?
I have no public comment online, Mayor Protem.
Great, we'll go ahead and move on to the city clerk update. This is a board applications discussion, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protem, commissioners, as you can see, we have a number of board appointments that are on for your discussion today. These board appointments are the recommendation of the mayor. They will also be up for a formal vote on Monday night, should you choose to move forward. I'm here to answer any questions. You should have received the memo in your packet and application materials. We're forwarded to you earlier in the week.
Are there any questions or comments on the board recommendations on Monday? We'll be considering the two appointments to the Gulf Advisory Board, Helena Housing Authority, ADA Compliance Committee, Board of Adjustments, two positions on the Business Improvement District, Loozakut County Heritage Tourism Council, Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council, and Police Commission. Okay. There are no other comments from the commission. We'll go ahead and move to public comment on this item. Is there any public comment?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment.
Okay, great. Next item on the agenda are presentations. We were to have the Helena Area Community Foundation present on their distribution of the COVID-19 Recovery Grant Program that the city funded. Ms. Frazier's not able to join us today, so we will table this item to a future meeting. Great, okay. First, on department reports, we have the Water and Wastewater Service Line Program. Mr. Leland is presenting this. So, go ahead, Mr. Leland.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. To give you a little bit of history, back in 2018, the city commission adopted a fee to put on for service line loan replacements. And it would be the service lines that the homeowner is responsible from the main to the house. And that service line, we were going to provide a zero percent loan to the homeowners for 15 years. And then also had a deferment if they met certain criteria, I believe it was 65% or 85% for that. I was told there was a specific calculation done to be able to see that it was the first commit, the commission put the fee on and it was $200 or $2.50 a month for the water and then $6.47 cents for the wastewater, because we were seeing more wastewater failures. And it was done based on the number of replacements we were seeing, seeing per year. And so that's how we kind of got to those amounts and then have it a revolving fund and eventually be able to take care of itself, depending on how many deferments and how much the inflation goes on. What we saw is not many of the homeowners were taking advantage of it, either through, we weren't providing enough education, letting know advertisements that was out there, but we have tried to do that, still have not seen a huge ramp up of the use of this program. And I think some of it has to do is you can put it on your homeowner's insurance and the homeowner's insurance takes care of it, instead of you having to pay back the loan, that's what we've been hearing. So, in 2020, we reduced the wastewater fee from $6.47 to $2.50 a month. And we still have a sizable fund in both of them. For the wastewater, we have $1.8 million. And the other one, we have 900, in water, we have 900,000. So, we have substantial funds that are tied to these funds. These funds cannot just be used for capital projects or operation and any of the other funds that are out there or treatment plants, anything. So, it is tied specifically to this loan program. I mean, there's a little bit of funds you could get into with the interest, but in general, these are tied right now. And so, we are just looking to say, at this point, with our current use, we have enough to take care of like 40 years if we want to continue the program. So, we are just saying, at this point, we don't need to collect any more fees and we want to cut it off. And then the staff went out and looked at other options that are out there. Instead of us providing a loan program and being in the loan business, is we have gone out and we looked at SWIP out of Sandy, Utah, that has taken over the service lines that are out there for a fee. They get it anywhere from, you know, $2.50 a month to $6 or $15 a month that hasn't come up with the negotiations. But they would essentially take over the service lines and be the people that take care of them, how they get replaced, when they get replaced, and how they do everything is essentially, we could get more into that. Or like the HomeServe is another one. It is recommended through the Montana League of Cities and Towns, National League of Cities and Towns as a warranty program that for a fee, the homeowner can opt into this program and it's an insurance fee and then they come in and take care of your main or your service line and all the fixes and everything associated with that. Or again, you can go to your private homeowner's insurance and just put on a rider for what you're allowed to do. And you were looking at about $50 to $65 a year. So, our recommendation is we cut the funds and either look at either a warranty program that the homeowner can opt into or private homeowner's insurance, but not look at a private one to basically take over the program that we're doing. So, at this point, we just say, let's remove the fees, keep the loans in place, because we don't know how to give back the money and what to do with that and continue the loan program and then make a recommendation to use like the HomeServe process.
Are there questions or comments from the commission?
Sure, yeah. So, so there's essentially 2.6 something, 2.7 million left. What about the idea of rebate? If anybody wants to.
Mayor Protem and commission, if I can address that, that question. I've talked to our utility billing department about the potential for a refund of that, because it is restricted money. It can be only used for these loan programs. I think that it would take a great deal of time and effort to try to figure that out. Their utility customers come and go. Rental units are change hands all the time. People sell their property, they buy their property. And to do a look back to find a fair and equitable way of rebating that money is not something that we can do at this time. We just don't have the staff resources to perform that exercise at this time. It's a potential, we could hire that out to a professional consulting firm to look into what that might look like. But at this time, I agreed with Public Works Director Leland that it's probably best just to end the fees at this time. And then we can look at the potential use of the funds as we go forward and try to find out what to do with it.
City manager.
And as part of the response to the question, Mayor Protem, we could also look into whether it's legal or not to temporarily reduce the rates within each of the utilities as a way to put that money back into the residential. Residential.
If I'm, my, I'd certainly be interested in something like that. I mean, you know, that's a fair lot of money that's, that's sitting out there and potentially could sit out there for a long time, anywhere from 40 to, I think it was 40 years projected, 65 if they kept collecting. So, I'd be interested in the idea of maybe the reduction of rates particularly. You know, these are utility customers. I think we're all aware of the impacts that, that inflation has had on all of our households. And I don't think we've seen the impacts that our main utility provider, Northwestern Energy, could be ahead for us this winter and, and so maybe some sort of break to help people with that. I mean, I've, I've sort of nerded out on this particular subject and, and I figured I've paid into this program since the beginning and haven't moved. And it's amounted to roughly $340 from inception to now. And that's no small chunk of change. And I'm one of 80, 600 users in the system and, and so I'd certainly be interested in it. And one last question and I'll quit, I think, for now. But if we chose to stay in, in the program and administer loans, is there, are there costs associated with the administration of those loans? I'm assuming there's time and, and effort spent at providing these loans and what would the cost of that be?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner Logan, I haven't calculated the exact cost of what, you know, administering these loans are, but it is time consuming for not only the administrative staff that begin the loan process. It goes from, you know, the inception of the application all the way through to filing it with the clerk and recorder's office to place the, place a lien on the property, should they, they sell their home. This particular program, in addition to, we have sidewalk loans, we have solar loans, we have West Side Connection loans, has actually become quite a, quite an administrative burden in the finance department, as because we're, we're very lean department and taking on more of these loans. And we're talking about the administration of the home loans as well. And it gets, it's complicated. There's audit fees associated with it, because all these loans have to be individually audited by our auditors. There's, so I, I haven't done a calculation on it, but there, there is a cost to the city of administering these loans. And it's, it's the true cost is it takes time away from other core activities that the finance department has to focus on as well.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, this is just an FYI, but I think about two weeks ago, we brought all the various managers of all the loan programs, the misstands and mentions together to make sure that we brought uniformity to the process regardless of the program through the city. So that we're complying with finance and audit obligations, so that we have standard procedures in place. So, I think at least from a management perspective, we're making progress, but I'll also suggest that as each of these programs were created, we didn't really look at the staffing necessary to support them. But we are supporting them and I think it will help bring some more uniformity and predictability to each of the programs and to work through each agency.
Go ahead.
Oh, sure. Mayor Protem, Ms. Anderson, I'd be interested to learn more about the loan process that we have here at the city. Also to looking at alternatives and other options to help streamline the process, help relieve some of the pressure on you all and your staff, finding alternatives for us to make it just a little bit easier. And also to, I'll save that question, but yeah, I'd like to learn more about that process if that's possible at a later time.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioner. Yeah, we're happy to bring it to an administrative meeting and, and discuss our various loan programs. Bring that to.
One comment I would have, I think, I might, I, I think I might be interested, and I don't know if there's, would be others on the commission who would, would be interested in this or not, if, if it's possible to maybe do both things. So, let's say, can we, can we have the loan program be sustainable for the next 20 years and a potential reduction in rates with that other half of the, the funds? Reason being, I mean, it might only be 31 service lines since 2018, but for those households, I mean, that is a significant expense. If your home insurance doesn't cover it and, you know, 15,000 bucks can run someone out of their house. And that's not what we want in our community. We want people to be able to afford to stay in their homes. And this is, I think the whole, none of us were on the commission when this was passed, but I think the whole purpose was how do we make sometimes these very large expenditures the interface with our, our city infrastructure, you know, affordable, occur in an affordable manner when you have to make these, you know, major repairs. So, I might be interested in, you know, how, how we maybe have this available for, it might only be, you know, four households every year, but that's for households that are not having to make a decision of, well, do I need to sell my house or not, because I don't, I need that equity to pay this off? And then, you know, do I have to leave town? So, I think I, I'd be interested in, you know, maybe can we figure out a some way to to put this money back into some sort of rate reduction and, and then keep it going for maybe another 20 years.
Mayor Protem, there's no question that this program has helped and at the staff level, we're kind of at the implement, monitor, adjust phase. And so, what we'll do is put together options for your consideration. I'd look at maintaining a program that's more realistic on past use. You know, we're going to have to argue with the attorneys what options exist in terms of those dedicated funds and rebates or reduction in water and sewer rates. And I'm sure that we can get to some, some options for your consideration.
I think part of that discussion can very well be, what is the cost to administer these programs? And, you know, are we, can the internal charge help address some of those? Because I think that, I mean, I know this next budget cycle, I'm sure it's going to come up again, but for example, right now, is anyone in the public has been thinking about a solar array on their house. Now is a great time to do it, because there's federal rebates that are available. And if you, I mean, say a $10,000 expense, which the average person, you know, isn't going to be able to just pull out of pocket, really awesome opportunity to use that federal rebate and incentive that the city provides in the zero interest loan. You know, I mean, I think that, and we want to be able to support that administratively and, and promote those type of programs. And that's something really unique and cool that the city do. So, as long as these kind of loan programs are able to support themselves, I think we should make those adjustments.
And Mayor Protem, I'll just say that the one part we haven't talked about, step level, is what the administrative cost of this program and collectively the others are.
Thank you, Ma- Mayor Protem and Commissioner and Interim Manager Burton. So, I think that, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, we, I think that we're all in agreement that these programs are, are very helpful to our residents in the city. And the conversation with this is that we just, you know, we really want to recommend that we actually just, at this point, end the fee. And the conversation with this is that we just, you know, we really want to recommend that we actually just, at this point, end the fee. You know, that's step one is to end the fee. And then we can bring back to the commission some options on on how we move forward with these particular funds and the services that we're providing the residents.
Logistically, do we have to do that all at once? Or if there were consensus among the commission, would we be moving forward and and removing that fee and then figuring out what the second half looks like?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, either way, it's, yeah, we can reduce the fee and still keep the money sitting there. So this is just one, see what the interest was to bring it forward in a a commission meeting, because we aren't going to get any vote here. And then we can come forward with the the existing fund balance of how we want to do it. What do we want to do for loans? Do we want to do something else that's out there, reduction? There's federal requirements coming down for lead service lines. And so there's a whole lot of things that are playing into this, and we'll have that as a future conversation when we talk to the attorneys of what can we do?
So I wonder if we'll, maybe let's take public comment first, and then I'll ask if there's consensus amongst the commission to bring that forward to a commission, a regular commission meeting. Did you?
I I can wait, if possible, another comment, but I can.
We'll go ahead and move to public comment first and then go from there. Yes, sir.
City commissioners, city staff, honestly, I don't know where everybody is, but anybody else. My name is Ed Carens. I'm a citizen of Helena, actually a resident of Helena, and I live in the city of Helena. So I paid the fee and I encountered all of the things that happened with this this particular program. Bear with me, I'm I'm going to read my statements. I wrote it over the weekend. I actually revised the the statements I had from the last meeting. And of course, city staff now has taken my thunder out of my statement. I apologize for that. But as I said, my name's Ed Carens. I agree with the city of Helena's efforts to have mechanisms upon the repair, renovation and maintenance of the residential service lines in the city. The maintenance service required by the main lines, that's funded by our real estate taxes. So there's a, there's a mechanism already in place that the main lines are taking care of, but the private lines, the individuals have to pay for that. The current program, and this is a mouthful, the residential water sewer line, water sewer line, service line, zero interest program is also difficult. Trying to say that three times. It is difficult for the homeowners to participate. It is difficult for the city of Helena to manage, and it is difficult for the service provider to get paid timely. I agree that, as has been suggested, the public needs to be better educated about the problems these components of the city's infrastructure. I do not agree that a flyer in the water bill is going to cut it. People don't read their water bills and they don't read what's what is is sent in them. So that's not a good solution. And that's been common enough. So like I say, my thunder's been taken away. In little administration, the program by city staff, insurance company alternatives have been explored. And again, as Mr. Leland stated, Montana League of Cities and Towns, through their national affiliation, support the Service Line Warranty Program, S L W. Every one of these has these little acronyms, so you've just got to get them straight. This program is provided by HomeServe. The city, though, must enter into an agreement with either the Montana League of Cities and Towns, or I don't know that they can do it with HomeServe just on their own. This is a question for Mr. Burton. But individual homeowners, I myself, I called up HomeServe. I cannot get the coverage in Helena, Montana. They are not offering the coverage to me, Joe Schmucketoli in Helena, Montana. They want eight thousand of us to get the coverage. That's how they make their money. So HomeServe itself, if you call them up or go on their internet website, they they won't give me a policy. The other alternative is suggested private homeowner insurance. Under this scenario, the city of Helena would just completely step out of it, and we'd have to be responsible for doing it with our own homework insurance. I'll be honest, I started in this, I was a spectator in this whole process. Now I've become a participant in the solution. I I have a company, we we do work in sewer lines. So so I know exactly, I'm I'm, I was out there today working. So I know exactly what's going on. So I talked, I had a customer to call, and and he referred me to their insurance company. So the adjuster came, called me, talked with me. And so they, the policy covered a a specific event that was a catastrophe that, and it was very limited to the particular catastrophe that was covered. And it was very limited to the amount of covers that that they would 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 do. It's, it's not a program that, you know, was a spot repair. So they would, they would fix ten feet of your sewer line. Well, the roots are growing in eighty feet of your sewer line. At ten feet, that's fine, they're fixed, okay? So that root broke through, you had a blockage. You still have seventy feet drawn roots in that. You haven't even dealt with. The private insurance does not cover that. And I asked, I'm not making this up. So insurance kind of protects you just for an incident. You know, warranty program, as Mr. Leland talked about, the HomeServe, you know, warranties cover like mechanical failures. And so the the roots that are growing, you know, all in the seventy feet of line, that's some kind of a mechanical failure, maybe. I I I don't know what HomeServe has has suggested. And so I I can't speak to that at all. I have been in contact with a SWIFT program, Sewer Water Insurance Association. You know, I previously shared with everybody, I shared it with staff, I shared it with the commission, a letter that they wrote to me. I I participated in, and I watched when they made a presentation to the commission. And so I was very interested. And so I wrote to them, and I wanted to now have more information. So they wrote me a very nice letter, and again, like I've shared it with everybody, that they want to work with the city of Helena and develop a proactive program. So they negotiate with the city of Helena, how much does the city want to pay? You know, is it five hundred thousand dollars? Is it a million dollars? Okay, for that kind of money, how many service lines can we get taken care of? As a general rule, a service line costs ten thousand dollars to fix. It it's just, that's about how it rounds out. Most of these programs go from the foundation of the house to the city main. They're not talking about fixing inside of the houses, under your slabs and whatnot. So they're talking about that external part. And it averages about ten thousand dollars. So you know, when you've got, when you're negotiating with, say, a SWIFT, how much are they going to take for the administration? How much is left over? Divided by ten thousand dollars, you'd know how many houses are going to get fixed. And with the SWIFT program, you know, again, I I like the fact that they were, they were very proactive. They they proposed solutions, and they would design the program based on the negotiation with the city of Helena. They would come in and say, this is what we're going to do, you're going to pay us a million dollars, and we're going to do ten houses. You know, that's unrealistic. So so that, I was very interested in that. I I also have shared some information, again, I know that I probably blast a lot of you with with my emails. And I might be in your spam, but whatever. But I shared the information about San Point, Idaho. San Point, Idaho is kind of on a tail end of a program to investigate their sewer laterals. The reason that they're doing that is because they want to put in a new wastewater treatment plant. So they want to know how much infiltration they have into the system. Infiltration is groundwater runoff water that goes into the sewer system. And so at your wastewater treatment plant, you're paid to treat clean water. I mean, the water was up in the air and it came down as rain. Technically, it's clean, but when it gets into the sewer system, it goes to the wastewater treatment plant. It has to get treated. They don't know that that was clean water. There's no way of differentiating either. So that's why San Point was doing this program. Their city attorney contacted me simply because he knew my interest in the SWIFT program. And he, you know, his question was, how's Helena working, making out with SWIFT? I said, wow, not so good. I'm doing it. So I I can tell you what I know about the program, but I can't tell you how it's working in Helena, Montana. But they did a pilot program. They have what's called SLIP, Sewer Line Inspection Program, where they inspected areas of the city, identified the worst area, and rehabilitated a thousand feet of those of those lines. And then they're monitoring at the wastewater treatment plant how that affected the infiltration. They contacted me again, because I asked them, well, how's that project going? Can I get some information? He said, Ed, we'll contact you when we're done, we'll be good, all of that. So we're still interested in SWIFT, maybe as as managing this program for us in the future as time goes on. Because they have the same restrictions. The the city administration doesn't have a lot of time to do these kinds of things. So, you know, I disagree that the city should just abandon the leadership in this role because of the experiences as, you know, in developing a solution. City Helena should be a leader of all these communities in developing our solution. You know, I understand ultimately the cost is there by us, the citizens. You know, City of Helena has no way of manufacturing money. We have to pay it to you. So so ultimately, we have to pay it. So we, the public, we have to be better educated. And, you know, I think then we can make informed decisions. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. We always appreciate your informative emails, too. Any other public comment?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Yeah, thanks. I just got to say thanks to staff. I, you know, I I don't think it's any particular. Thanks to staff for the work on this. And and I I don't think it's any particular secret that I've been over the years critical of this program for, and I guess originally how it was set up. When when the commission originally took this up, there was a significant legal review about whether this charge that was being placed on water bills was a tax or whether it was an assessment. And I think I I still have that concern. So in any case, I I appreciate the fact that we're looking at other ways to deal with this. I think, you know, Mr. Carens, I really appreciate your insight here. There's clearly a lot of different ways to address this problem and 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 so I guess I really just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Commission comments? Um, one, one thing, I guess, that the loan program is what we know right now. We've had other opportunities to learn about other, and I guess I would be interested. You know, once we vote on keeping the fee or not, if we have an analysis of what is actually the best thing for our citizens' buck, for lack of a better phrase, in terms of, you know, ensuring we're able to support homeowners when they have this unexpected, very large expense. You know, is there one thing that's better than the other? Is the loan program a a better option than participating in HomeServe or or another program? And I don't necessarily know I have clarity on that. Or if it will just take more analysis. But I guess with that, is there consensus from the commission to eliminate the fees? And then continue this discussion of what is the best path forward with the funds as they sit?
My perspective, yes.
Especially this time of year, yes.
Great. City manager.
So Mayor Protem will work up a resolution that will accomplish that for your consideration. And I think we'll continue based on this conversation to analyze your options and come back. And that may include a tier service program, maintaining level at the city depending upon circumstances, what options exist in the private market or citizens and just bring collectively some analysis back on those various options for your consideration. But number one is we'll prepare a resolution to do so.
We'll go ahead and move on, and thank you for your patience and us moving this to another day. Next on the agenda, we have ARPA and General Fund Savings Update. Ms. Opitz, are you covering this again?
At some point, you may be tired of seeing my face around this issue.
Never.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, this afternoon. Once again, we're back to discuss the General Fund Savings and ARPA funding. As I have in the past, I just want to give an update of where we're at financially speaking. So initially, the city received a distribution from the ARPA from the US Treasury for the ARPA funding and the amount of eight million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. In the prior months, we have allocated to the Ten Mile Water Treatment Project, one point eight million dollars. And then in the last city, full city commission meeting, several projects that had been identified through the city manager's office as priority requests that came from internal departments were funded to the tune of one million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty. And for those that are listening online, those projects included the Civic Center HVAC system. So that was a a match for some existing money that we already had, that was going to that project. The computer aided dispatch and record management system for the police department and fire. The Mount Helena Radio Building, which was struck by lightning earlier this summer and needed to be replaced. And then a remodel of the Law Justice Center's second floor, where there are going to be some county offices that will be moving to that space. Bring up some additional space in the annex that will be then made available for our police department. And then this is the city's ERP system, which is essentially the hub of all of our finances, HR and other processes. And that was an additional, excuse me, five hundred thousand dollars on top of some CARES money that had already been made available for that project. Additionally, the commission allocated a contingency fund for one point six million dollars. And that leaves us with a grand total of three million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars remaining to be allocated. Just a review of the process to date. We started this way back when, in August, with a review of the city's city department capital improvement plans. So the commission would have an opportunity to see exactly what lays ahead of us in the next five and ten years, as well as review of some capital funding projects that were not funded in this past fiscal year. In September, the commission requested that we bring forward requests from internal departments. That list is not included in this packet, but has been made available in past packets. From that list, the commission requested that the city manager call that list down to top priorities. As you heard in the recap that I just gave, majority of those projects either had a time pressing time limit, or we already had funding available to those, to be able to match those funds, to move forward with some of those projects. And then, of course, we had the vote on those internal allocations, the last full commission meeting on the seventh. In the, in the interim of this internal discussion, we did put out a letter of a request for letters of intent to apply for external organizations. We brought the full packet, the LOI packet, to the commission at the December, excuse me, October twenty-sixth meeting, and presented those letters of intent as well as some potential parameters for what an external application might look like. And today, we're bringing a refined list of priorities to you. And we are requesting that the commission identify projects from that list that was originally generated in the LOI process to move forward to a full application. We have a proposed timeline. I stress this is proposed. At any point, if the commission needs more information, we want to slow down, you want to have groups come in and give presentations. All of this can be adjusted, but we're looking at a late November through mid-December timeframe for those external applications. And we do have a small panel of staff that are ready and willing to do an initial review of those external applications for completeness, which we could then bring to the commission if that's the path that you choose. And in addition, through our discussions, the commission has requested a handful of object, objects, projects that needed to come back for additional discussion and revised quotes. One of those items was the Grand Street Theater Roof Replacement Project. You'll notice from our past discussions, this has increased slightly. The initial request that came from internal, our internal departments was for sixty thousand. There's a nine thousand dollar buffer in there, given how we're seeing contracts and other inflationary issues come up with some of our projects. So that's the addition of that nine thousand. The type six wildland fire truck, which unfortunately caught fire earlier this summer. It, we're still working through the insurance process on that, but it was a request of the commission that we bring that item back. The quote right now on that, give or take, is about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, I'm going to skip to the event permitting software and then we'll come back to the Henderson Bridge, because that's a little bit more complicated. And there was an additional request from the, from Commissioner, I believe Commissioner Reed to revisit the event permitting software. Events will be included in the new ERP system. As we implement, there will be a gap between when we can actually have the new software doing the permitting. And so this was going to be an interim solution to provide software that would handle event management.
And I think before you jump into the bridge, if I may interrupt you, and Commissioner Reed has a question.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a question. So the first time it was presented, it was the twenty five thousand as a short term solution. And I had asked for clarification on whether or not it is possible to move event permitting forward in the queue instead of investing twenty five thousand that is later sort of offloaded. Is there any way within the existing ERP funding to move event permitting that fast track it a bit so that we do not need to spend an additional twenty five thousand? I'm not sure I've got a hundred percent clarity on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioner Reed. So we did go back to our vendor and in the statement of work. And we were able to bring that permitting and community development phase earlier. It will start in August of twenty twenty three, but it will take one year to implement that, that entire software project pack. If nothing can start until the core financials are complete. And so core financials are, are first. And then the earliest that human resources and the permitting, licensing and community development phase would be August. That's the earliest it can start. And then it, it obviously takes a year to do a full implementation.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Knocky.
Mayor Protem, commission. So we've been working with the clerk's office. And so a hundred percent, some of the things that the citizens have wanted was electronic format calendars and maps. While working with the clerk through M files and Prevo, we can provide an electronic application which we're currently working on. Maybe, big maybe, a map and the calendars. So we're getting some of the hot points that they were requesting. So at this point, I think we're giving them as much as we can. And at this point, that interim step is going to gain us much more than a map and a calendar.
Thank you.
Not the form?
The form is coming through. Still available, HTML or online.
Okay. And is that ready to be deployed?
Mayor Protem and commission, we pivoted, we had the paper form pretty much ready to go. We had some internal discussions on that. That's when we started talking about electronic forms. So just within the past couple of weeks, staff has been working on that electronic form. We're trying to pare it down so it's as simple and straightforward as possible. So that's taking a little bit of time. We're still hopeful to shoot for a release date, you know, somewhere in January. Pushing a little bit more towards February now, just to make sure we get all done with that. We're still pretty much on schedule for what we plan on, but no, it's maybe in three or four weeks, we might have something that we can show as you.
We'll say, I think we have a couple of frequent flyers who would be more than willing to be beta testers in the community. But thank you. Any other? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, commissioners. The additional item that's left here to for us to discuss is the Henderson pedestrian bridge. And as you all know, we do not currently have a design for that project. So when we were requested to bring a quote, there's been some, some hard digging, but we don't quite have a hard quote for that yet. I'll turn it over to Dr. Knocky in a moment. He was going to be doing some work in the interim between our novice deadline and today to try and see if we can get a more authoritative cost associated there. But at this point, the request that we feel comfortable moving forward when this is seventy five thousand dollar baseline feasibility study and potential dollars that could go towards a partial early design for this bridge. Dr. Knopki, do you have anything else to add to that?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Doos, that depending on the cost and the complexity of that bridge location, seventy five thousand will give us way at least to a point where we can get a cost estimate. Potential cost estimate. But we did reach out to some prefab bridge manufacturers and I did give a couple of costs. So just to have bridge that would span that distance and the width of a ten foot wide path on top deck, on a ten foot wide deck, is seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
And that doesn't include installation.
That's not include installation, it does not include engineering developments, path, anything like that to connect that. That's just the bridge to be set, ordered and brought to Helena. Interestingly, well, not interesting, it's kind of kind of be a common, that's a nine to twelve month meantime. From the time you order it to the time that they can practically deliver it. We did reach out to a local, a regional bridge, a construction company does bridges. They said, you know, with those kind of quotes, if those prices hold, they would figure total cost would be one point two five to one and a half million dollars. With that included, that would include engineering and installation. Again.
And the bridge.
And the bridge. But again, until they get down and do some good technical work to figure out what the requirements and everything, what the requirements for M T. Who we have race and power lines because of the bridge structure. The other one is that seven hundred and fifteen is a bare bones, no rules bridge. It's a wood deck and that's it. They come covered. They come barricaded, so people can't throw things from the bridge down onto the passing cars. You can get heated decks. You can pretty much you have the money, you can do whatever you want with that bridge. But that's, that's kind of where we found out. And that's wasn't around, but we thought was around one and a half to two hundred dollars.
Commissioner Reed, so sorry.
Fine. Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. And unfortunately, Parks and Rec does not seem to be here this evening, but originally, the, oh, they're online. Okay, great. The original placeholder for internal projects was for Centennial Trail at a hundred and twenty thousand. And I feel like we kind of lost that somewhere along the way. And I, I had asked for clarification about the one hundred and twenty thousand, what would that do? What would it cover? And I got some information. But I'm wondering if it's possible to bring back the Centennial Trail piece again, because it, it fell off a little bit. When we're talking about this project and maybe there can be trail work done, bridge evaluation, et cetera. But the two pieces somehow got disconnected somewhere.
City manager.
Mayor Protem, if you don't mind, man, can you expand on the conversations that have been happening with staff?
Happy to, Manager Burton, Mayor Protem, Commissioner Reed. An additional point that was not, we learned of this since, again, our novice deadline, but I intended to discuss today with the commission. We have, in the last few days, learned of a couple of grant programs that are going to be administered through the state that we think we would be a really strong contender for, for Centennial Trail. They do require match. And so that additional one twenty that was requested, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I should say, that was requested by staff. And this is where I'll ask either Doug online or Dr. Knopki to correct me. I believe included the realignment of this Centennial Trail near Benton Avenue. This is, we're in discussion right now with the NSF related to an agreement to move that trail further away from the railroad tracks for safety. It would be, so the realignment of that area of the trail and some additional paving and trail maintenance work. Again, we do have potential that there would be the ability to leverage those dollars if that, if the commission so chose to move forward of that hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're also in the process of doing some work to make sure that that's a good, that's a good estimate. When would these requests initially came in? Staff sort of shot for the stars and we want to make sure that we have the correct quote. Also, shooting for the stars three months ago can look different than what it does now. It might be right on the nose. So we're working to get a more authoritative cost related to that. I would just note, the grants that we're looking at are reimbursement grants. So there would be a need to have some available flexible funding on the front end to be, be reimbursed. And additionally, there is a end of January deadline. So if we wanted to make that money available for match, a decision sooner rather than later from the commission would be good.
If you, Mayor Protem, just to pop, that if we could reword the requested internal quotes to include Centennial Trail, then I would, I would ask that we could put those two pieces back together in, in that line or in two lines. It doesn't matter, but I would, I would like to see that come back for our consideration.
And I would add, I'd, I'd be interested, I mean, I think that's one of those things that there might be interest in the commission and moving more quickly, not considering everything like we did for some of the internal requests. You know, if we can move on that quickly and there's consensus, or at least three on the commission, I mean, it'd be great if we could get, you know, everyone supportive or not, but I, I think that if where we can maximize our investments, that's in our best interest. And I'd be interested in moving more quickly on something like that and then continue to whittle down. You know, the use of the other funds. City manager.
So Mayor Protem, commissioners, pulling the one twenty back up into this shortlist. If, in terms of responding to Mayor Protem, there's consensus to move forward, we'll prepare a resolution for your consideration at the next venue, commission, on any of these projects.
Particularly for the, this grant piece, I think if we can get some of those pieces nailed down, I, I'd certainly be interested in moving forward with Centennial Trail improvements.
And that, just for clarification, Mayor Protem, and that total would be a hundred and ninety five thousand.
That's fine.
Which includes seventy five for the bridge plus the one.
Does Mayor Protem, if I may, a question, the Henderson Bridge piece, does it have the same timeline? Would that be part of the grant possibility or are they separate?
Mayor Protem, I think they would be separate, because the grant requires some designation of control of whatever that you're installing. And, and today, we're still waiting to hear back from the NSF on whether they've are good with signing the agreement that was previously given to us. So we wouldn't have that ability probably by the end of January. So I don't think that the Henderson Trail would make it.
One thing that I would also just like to note, that I think we might be available, I think it's worth a broader conversation. Because there's a lot of money available of a conversation in DT about the Montana underpass that is has, has been, has been scoped in the past, I'll just say that there is a consolidated rail infrastructure and safety improvements program that's tens, well, billions of dollars in available funds that it would be excellent if we, you know, if we can say we have two projects that we would like, we could move forward with and, and at the very least, maybe this Henderson Bridge can fall under that. The whole point of it is to improve safety around rail infrastructure.
So Mayor Protem, just to summarize, we'll come forward at least, and I'm not saying that this conversation is over. But with a consideration for the commission to allocate a hundred and ninety five thousand, including some preliminary design of the bridge and the trail improvements, which I think would set us up for competitive posture on any potential grants. Plus, it would give us better information when talking about what the scope of the bridge is, what its cost would be. Which could also set us up for grants, but at least then we know what the term cost is for your consideration. So we will move forward on that. I know there's been a lot of talk about the Grand Street Roof. Are there any other items on this that you want us to pull forward relative to that consideration?
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. I would really advocate for that fire truck. I mean, that was a, that's a, an important piece of response apparatus whose loss was completely out of the blue. And I think the quicker we can get get that back in, in the service, the better. You know, wildland fires every year continue to be a bigger and bigger issue. And I'm gonna strongly hope we can get that moved forward.
Commissioner Reed.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. The insurance situation is still not clear. So if we were to move it forward and use ARPA funding, is there a mechanism by which we could return the, is there any issue with that if insurance does come through and we do not actually need to expend ARPA funds?
Well, I think we'd walk through that process and be able to answer that question that the insurance center needs this. And at that point, the ARPA money will not have been spent.
I just want to make sure there's no issues with that should insurance come in and any, I want to make sure we have clarity, have no issue with moving it forward, but if insurance is still not settled, it would be good to make sure we don't walk into a
Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, if I may. So if we remove ahead and allocate initial funds for the, for the fire apparatus and in the process, the, you know, at that time, when they get the insurance settled, then it would just come back, you know, we could the savings, the two hundred thousand dollars or whatever slapped, there is an eleven thousand dollar deductible on it. Would then, could then come back into the general fund savings for future distribution.
Yeah, and Mayor Protem, I also had that these are our best guess, supply chain issues, et cetera, will play into it.
Well, and I think it's worth noting. Well, and I think it's worth noting, um, that when we had budgeted for the ladder truck, that was in FY twenty-one and we just got it, so. Um, I would be supportive of, of that, um, especially given the, the time that it takes to get these vehicles. So I guess is there consensus to bring forward those two items?
I've heard, I've heard consensus on the two items for, uh, the trail, and then now I, I think I'm hearing unanimous consensus on the fire truck.
I, I would also, um, be happy to move Grand Street forward, and replacements are not well served by delay. So I would be happy if, if we're moving this forward, I'm, I'm good with that one as well.
Can I, so in the future, I, I'm supportive of that. One thing I would be interested in, um, we, I mean, Grant Street's only come up a couple of times in the budget since I've been on the commission, but it is, it's obviously a supportive of Grand Street and it's obviously a, a city facility that we're responsible for maintaining. Um, but we also don't produce any revenue from the facility. And so is it worth, I mean, I, at some point, ma- and maybe it's in the next budget cycle, I'd be interested in just maybe having an old, a, a better understanding of the ongoing cost to the city. Um, because so far, in my three years, it has been kind of last minute, oh, you know, there is, I think it was the back, the, the roof in the back or, oh, an overhang that we had, it was like twenty-five thousand gutters, maybe it was gutters. Um, and you know, various issues that kind of seem to come up, maybe not last minute, but we don't necessarily have a capital improvement plan for Grand Street, even though we're responsible for it. But it also doesn't produce any revenue for the city. So I think it's worth maybe just having a more holistic understanding about that facility.
And, uh, Mayor Proten, commissioners, we can certainly do that, I think Troy's got all the information. Uh, the historical relationship to a nonprofit in the city. Understanding that it's a beautiful historic structure that serves a wonderful purpose. Back to the So, we can tee that up for a future discussion.
Any any questions or concerns on those items? Director Danielson.
Thank you, I'm, I'm just gonna work with Amanda here, just so that I, I make sure that I understand what we're bringing to the commission meeting. Um, I want to clarify that, um, we're bringing seventy-five thousand dollars for the uh, Henderson Bridge Design, a hundred and twenty thousand, um, as a grant match for the Centennial Trail improvements. Two hundred thousand for the Type Six Wildline, Wildland Fire Truck, and sixty-nine thousand for the Grant Street Theater, um, for the commission to vote on. Okay, thank you, Baron.
Yes.
Did you want us to explore that? And possible improvements for Only reason I say this is if we do underpass, it's going to come back into malfunction junction. Um, and so, we have a, already a semi-kimary approval from DT on the roundabout for that area. It would probably be a good corridor project if we could get from maybe that intersection through the railroad crossing, maybe down to Cedar as a corridor project, as a safety, because there are sidewalks along that corridor.
Yeah, I, I guess I might, so I, um, there's obviously a lot of federal funding that's available. Um, I had gone through well, close to like five hundred of the grants that are available and pulled out some of them that were matching some of the priorities that we had in a number of our master plans and sent them, um, to Amanda and she obviously is not only is having our state grants in front of us, but there's a lot of money out there, um, that we want to get as much of it back to Montana as possible. Um, I know that Senator Tester's office has also indicated, um, willingness to support, um, entities like, um, the city and, and completing some of these grants. There are a couple other um, large federal grants, um, that would include addressing, um, uh, traffic safety, improved transportation routes, et cetera. In my personal opinion, especially serving on TCC, the Transportation Coordinated Committee, I think now is the time to move on some of those, like the roundabouts, and if we can capture some of those large federal funds for something like an underpass. I, I am one hundred percent, um, in favor of moving forward in the multimodal plan, um, the, the underpass. And that was estimates from two years ago, the estimate that we had was thirty-five million dollars. Maybe thirty-one, I think thirty-five million, and then the Montana Malfunction Junction Roundabout was, um, five million dollars.
Small ones five and the big ones.
Ten, yeah, okay, um. So I think now definitely is the time, um, to move on some of those, and so I think that if we could maybe figure out what are some of these larger projects that we would like staff to spend time on pursuing these grants, um, not in fact, most of the, um, federal grants don't actually require matches, but require that we are we have, we have staff ready to move on them. Um, there are a number of organizations, including National League is partnering with a couple of organizations to provide technical support. Um, and getting these completed, um, I've actually heard about some of that technical support being writing the actual grant on behalf of the municipality and, um, really providing that staff capacity that municipalities like ours just don't have. Um, I mean, there's entire in most municipalities, you know, we have entire departments of folks who do this, not just one person. Um, so if there's interest, I think that it would be worthwhile to really start moving on some of these before they expire in the next I mean, over the next two years is, is when this application processes are open. Some of them are rolling, some of them are in phases. Um, but there's about I'd say about twenty that we have projects that would probably be good fits for, but obviously require allocation of staff resources.
Yeah, and Mayor Proten will tell you that we haven't had time yet, but we will come forward with review of federal grants, not that we're gonna walk through every federal grant, but identifying opportunity. Uh, and that will be at a future administrative meeting, but it's certainly on our list of things to do.
Mayor Proten, thank you, thank you very much for this. I, I agree that we need to continue bird dogging all the necessarily that, whether it's state, federal, private, public grants and programs that are out there, so we can make our dollar stretch a little bit further. Uh, so I thank the staff for, for keeping an eye on those and, you know, looking at federal grants, brownfields programs, because the railroad, there's a, there's some probably a little bit of pollution or, uh, forget what I'm trying to say here, but the, look at, how do we get the railroad to maybe do some cost sharing as well? If, if this is on Montana Avenue, finding ways to where we can put together a funding package and working with our partners on this, it might even involve the county. But looking at ways that we can do this, this underpass that we don't have to worry about with floods, we don't have to worry about going broke, trying to pay for it, but looking at ways that we can cost share this as much as we can. So I appreciate the work you're doing, keeping an eye on those grants, so thank you for that.
Thank you. If we're ready, I can move on.
Quick question from the Zobits, so are you getting ready to go outside of the city?
I'm ready to go.
Relative to internal projects, and I guess I was somewhat moved by Mr. Raymond's commentary at our last administrative meeting, relative, I, I guess one of the concerns that he broached was Anderson and Centennial Trail. Uh, the other was, uh, safe routes to schools. And whether that should be something we pick up over time, relative to ARPA. Just a thought. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you.
Manager Burton.
Can I start?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had, uh, someone from the public said they could not hear you and requested you speak and was like.
So just to lay the groundwork, we've talked in the past about the external projects, and we've got a list of, we've categorized them as best. If you're not prepared, or if you are prepared to go into detail on projects that you want to bring forward, then we would ask the applicant to put the order the letter of intent, put together a formal application based upon the, uh, that draft that we presented some time ago, so that we're not asking everybody to go through all that work. If you're not prepared to bring forward outside projects for discussion today, uh, we would ask that you give that some thought, and perhaps at the next administrative meeting, we start talking. So that just kind of lays the groundwork, I hope, uh, not that we expect results today, but we do want to lay the groundwork, so that you're comfortable and you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Proten, Manager Burton. Um, yes, that's absolutely correct. If we choose today that we want to postpone that discussion, we're welcome, we're welcome to, to do that. Um, I did want to review, um, where we're at to date with, um, our external process. So we did go out for a letter of intent to apply, uh, we have forty-one organizations that responded to that um, with a total of that ask of nearing sixteen million dollars. I, I don't have my quick math in front of me, um, we did just, uh, do a quick total, um, retotaled, uh, the, uh, internal request that, um, was just discussed that included the roofs, the wildland truck, um, usability and decide and design and the pedestrian or excuse me, and the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Centennial, um, that was a total of four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, so ignore all of the math on the previous screen, because it did not include that hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's two point eight million.
There we go. Um, so what remains is about, um, yeah. So we have we have roughly, um, two point eight million dollars that are, would be left yet, um, for external groups. Um, at some point, if we do choose to walk down the path of, of discussing those, um, external applications, I think it would be helpful for those groups as they move forward in the application process to have an understanding of what money, um, would be available. Um, so if there's appetite amongst the, amongst, amongst the commission, um, to set a dollar amount as we move forward, um, I think that that would be helpful for those groups. I also did want to discuss our, the parameters, um, and priorities. Um, the parameters, uh, that we provided to you last commission meeting, this is very similar uh, with some more specific clarification. Including that, uh, the funds would only be available for one time, one time only, um, for projects that provide long-term community impact and may not be used for ongoing operations and personnel. Um, that was more vaguely stated in the prior commission meeting, um, in terms of parameters that we presented to you. Other than that, everything else is the same. Um, and then we did adjust the external application priorities based on, uh, our discussion from the last commission meeting also, so, um, originally included in that list was programs and projects benefiting vulnerable populations. We clarified, uh, that public safety also included public health programs and projects. Um, we added, um, the improved quality of life, uh, priority area as well as economic development. Um, in your packet, you should have received, um, the summary sheet, very similar to what you received, uh, the prior week. However, we did, uh, make an attempt to, um, put each of these projects into a priority area, so that you could take, take a look at that and consider, um, how you wanted to look at, categorize, or weigh, um, these L O I, um, letters of intent against each other. If it is of the interest of the commission, we would turn it over to you now to discuss any projects that you might want to move forward, or we can table that discussion.
Um, so now, one thing I might be interested in is if maybe at our next administrative meeting, the, each commissioner could come back with their top five to ten projects and then any other requirements or, um, I guess areas of, of focus that we would want to see in applications, um. I think that that way maybe we can narrow down, and I, I mean, I think probably wise, if everyone could keep it within those four priorities that we've already agreed upon, but I think that might give us a starting point to talk about, um, what entities would fare best, um, in an application process, um, given the priorities we've agreed to. Does anyone have thoughts on that?
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Think, I tried to look at it, like, with the idea of wants versus needs, to look at what are some things that we really, would be really nice to have, but stuff that is an urgent concern or urgent need for a community. Started going through the list, uh, kind of scoring things one through five, one would be a want and a need would be a five, and so kind of looking at how it's score those for myself, I think what you said, top five or top ten, I think, I think that'd be easy enough for myself to do that, to not speak for the other commissioners, I'm sure they do just by their own process, but, uh, to look at kind of the wants and needs right now, where our community's facing, um, you see a lot of need here, fifteen point seven million dollars worth of from forty-one different groups and nonprofits, and we have a little under four million dollars left. What is, or is it two point eight million? Two point eight million, so it's, every time we meet, it seems to be dwindling down, so, but there is a need there, but there also is a passion and a concern in people that are involved. Uh, wanna, wanna bite at this apple, maybe it's, we're not gonna fund something or a project entirely. Maybe it's to seventy-five percent, or maybe we say, we'll give you a little bit of this and encourage that organization to maybe do fundraising on the end, so we can do some cost sharing, or maybe we find a grant that matches that we could leverage. But that's just some of my thoughts, kind of looking at, or to encourage you all, look at the wants and needs, but you all have your own process and thoughts on that, thank you.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Proten, unfortunately I have to step out, I will sign back in a moment, I'm fine with, uh, going to the next meeting and, and ranking our choices. Um, I think with regard, uh, to the direction you have requested, setting an amount, um, maybe we can discuss that at the next meeting as well, um, and between now and then. I, I am comfortable with the drafted priorities and parameters as set forth for now, and we use those as our framework the next meeting where we talk about the dollar amount and which projects, I am good with that, and I will be back on my way.
Thank you. Um, one thing that I, and I can't recall, could you maybe go back to the, um, requirements that we I wonder if it's worth the conversation about for one-time-only expenditure. for one-time-only expenditures. I think that there are a lot of really solid requests that were included that aren't necessarily one-time-only, but I also don't want to put us in a position where I think it's different if it's maybe a pilot project, but if it's not a pilot project, I, I do worry about, you know, are we just like startup cost capacity building? I think that's different than ongoing costs. I don't know if others have other thoughts, but I also don't want to be us, us to be in a position where in, in two years from lack of funds, you know, we can't keep something going, or if there is, you know, the expectation that we step in because frequently the city ends up kind of being the backstop for a number of things that are, don't always fall into the wheelhouse of a municipality. But people's mindset is frequently, you know, well, who else is going to do it? So right or wrong? Just throwing that out there. Yeah, Chris Logan.
Thank you. I'm going to be quite hesitant about supporting something that will, you know, require future commitment. I mean, I think one of the most interesting election elections that I watched this, this last week was Missoula County. So Missoula County had dedicated quite a few ARPA carriers' funds for what they were calling crisis services. And they saw the, the horizon where that money was going to run out. And so they went to their citizens for five point something million a levy to continue that. And, and so that's, that's the, and it ultimately failed, but that's the, the difficulty with starting up new programs with one-time money. And so I'm going to be really hesitant supporting something along those lines. I share that. Concerns.
So Mayor Proton, I think that was a consideration, I think, in the grant itself. So if you say, hey, here's priority one, big grant, part of the criteria was one time versus ongoing expenditures. And we copied that from the county's process where they had a certain criteria. So if we need to modify that or strengthen it, that can certainly be a part of the discussion.
I think maybe in the application, it just has to be a really compelling case if it's for a pilot program or a, or startup cost. I don't know if I necessarily saw that in some of the letters that were for more ongoing sort of projects, but we also weren't asking for that. And I don't think it's fair to judge them based on, I mean, we asked for a letter of intent, not, you know, a robust application. So I think that we should give, you know, if someone makes a compelling argument in an application, I think that, you know, that's where we can consider what that looks like.
And Mayor Proton, didn't we have that as a part of the application?
Mayor Proton, Manager Burton, that's correct. So that would be, that was the language that we actually changed here. And the second bullet from the bottom, the intent, I think, was to, to strengthen that information or that parameter so that in, in my, in my vision, what I had heard from the, from the prior commission meetings was that pilot projects might not be included. We can spell that out even stronger if that's, if that's the, well, the commission, I, I hear, I'm hearing two different opinions on that. So I would just be looking for the city commission to provide some consensus on how you'd like that to move forward.
I mean, I'm someone who I think a pilot project is a one-time-only because it is for a limited period of time to try something out. But there were other applications that we saw that were building staff capacity, which I think is maybe not, that's different than a pilot program. In my opinion.
May I ask questions? Just for, for clarity, going forward, trying to, this doesn't have to be decided now. So for example, there, there, you know, in looking at some of the applications, there were existing programs that were asking for, for dollars to either supplement their program or to help them continue their program in the next two, three years. And so and then there were programs that were, you know, for example, care their mental health services. So just for clarity, I think that we're, we're trying to understand so that people don't waste their time in submitting application, what the commission is looking for in regards to limiting this now two point eight million dollars to what, what types of, of programs does that include? And would that, or would that not include, you know, supplementing, for example, the Nutcracker Program over the next three years, or Katie's Kids Program over the next few years, Symphony Kids. Those are, you know, those are all programs that are existing programs that are just asking for some supplemental dollars to continue those programs.
Mayor Proten Commissioners and Director Davis, and what I'm hearing is that I'm not sure that full commission's there yet, but the ongoing expenditures are a concern for this group because it's going to be in and out and gone. But there may be exceptions to that. But we're looking for direction on where the commission's interested in us reaching out to an organization to fill out a full application for consideration, rather than just saying, okay, all forty-one of you do it, when we know that there's just not enough money going around. So I think where we're positioned relative to the draft is good. And if we get feedback from the commission at the next administrative meeting to qualify that even further and listen to the discussion as to what my thoughts to the top, not that it'll all rise to the top right away. It might take two or three meetings for you to get through that discussion. But I think we're well-prepared to take further direction from the governing body at the next meeting and further refine it.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. You know, to that point, you know, looking at it's with the two point eight million that we have and the fifteen point seven in requests, forty-three different programs, projects, and you know, when you do our scoring, I think we'll have, whether it's the, our top five means the number, or maybe it's the dollar amount. Maybe we find ten projects that can fit within the ten point eight million. I think if we do eventually, let's say, three of us come up with an idea or have a program in here that's that startup that you talked about, or the, and the program that we, pilot project, we all kind of, we, three of us find, kind of find consensus that maybe that's part of our top five. Maybe that's what flips to the top, but having our, I like that idea that you brought up earlier, Mayor Proton, of doing your top five or having like your scored, like I'm scoring mine. I started going through this list, but having a score, bringing it in or have the, the dollar amount. Maybe it's those projects that can fit within the two point eight million dollars. Say, here's my top seven. So looking at those things, but I think if one of those, if that project you're talking about ends up, we, we all agree on it, or it will throw that in the pile of things as us as a commission agree on. So I could see finding a way that we can maybe get there. That makes sense.
I think it makes perfect sense, but what hasn't happened is the discussion between among the governing body where priorities start rising to the top. Yep. And so that's, that's really what I'm looking forward to at the next meeting. And you may not conclude it, but you also may find that you're on the same page with a certain idea. And then we'll walk through that process, just like we did the intro.
Yeah, I think that's good. And I would recommend everyone do read through Hellenary Area Community Foundation's report for us too, because I'll see a lot of overlap in some of the funds that were expended through that grant program with some of the requests, not to say that that eliminates, you know, nullifies that application, but something to keep in mind that there are some that have already gotten fourteen thousand dollars and does that weigh into our consideration of, you know, how much another program may or may not get.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Just, just one point to make on that note. One thing that was different about the COVID recovery funds for those groups that applied, that they're, they had to be a compelling argument for the use of those to recover from COVID nineteen, just to provide that information for the public. That obviously is not necessarily a stipulation that we're talking about with these funds.
I just have to say this, Mayor Proton, Commissioners, that's a really impressive list. Good job.
Anything else on the ARPA discussion?
Mayor Proton, I would just say I appreciate your suggestion and I think that'll help get us down the road and find if we have anything in common.
Great.
And I think we will.
So with that.
Absolutely. I agree. I concur with Commissioner Logan, appreciating the suggestions you made. Also too, I look forward to seeing if there's some overlap in terms of our, our hopes and concerns and our dreams for Helena, but also too, I, I, it is an impressive list where we went from one administrative meeting three days before the deadline, we had four applicants to jump up to thirty-three. I think that shows there's a lot of passion for our community. So I appreciate that a lot.
And we will go ahead and move on to public comment. Is there any public comment on the side of?
Mayor Proton, Commissioners, I do have one hand raised online. Jen Gersky.
Ms. Gersky.
Hey there, Mayor Proton and Commissioner. I have some public work comment regarding one of the applications you have in your packet.
Go ahead.
I am Jen Gersky, Executive Director of YWCA Helena, and I am here in my official role as Executive Director of YWCA Helena. YWCA Helena operates a twenty-four-room shelter for women and children, twenty-four rooms, eighteen of which can house children with their mothers. Right now, we have nineteen women and eight, and fourteen children in residence. We are a partner of the R Redeemers Full Continuum Housing Project presented by a collaboration of community service providers. YWCA Helena, Habitat for Humanity, Rocky Mountain Development Council, R Redeemers Lutheran Church. We hope to add the City of Helena as a collaborative partner to the funding aspect of this part, of this project. I know you have an LOI and a large document that includes many requests for funding. Ours is one, just one of them, and we went through an eighteen-month feasibility study. And the request for funds you have is the result of this collaborative process. I've learned much from my partners on this project. I have learned that Habitat for Humanities list for getting into the queue to build a house is about two hundred deep. I've learned that RMDC supports a wide array of different constituents and has taught us about different pools of funds to potentially utilize as YWCA selects or seeks collective and collaborative answers to our community's homelessness challenges and seeks answers to the dearth of housing for our neighbors who are living at or below thirty percent of area median income. The feasibility study that you have as part of our, of our LOI shows a compelling and obvious need for the development of this project by the quantifiable numbers of housing stock and affordability alone. While this point doesn't, does need to be highlighted at every opportunity, it's not my focus. With the extraordinary opportunity that this is, this one-time-only shot in the arm opportunity, the city has to affect, I want to share some of why I am excited about this project. We are talking about three housing nonprofit organizations that serve our neighbors on different parts of the housing continuum, coming together to find a solution to our community's dismal housing picture. It's a partnership that included a community-focused faith group in R Redeemers who started the conversation and gathered those three partners together. Then this snowball of a group involved the city in a CDBG planning grant for the feasibility aspect of it. It's got momentum, it's got promise, and it's got solutions. The project is innovative. It's the first of its kind. It's a solution that our community alone could use ten more of yesterday. Rocky Mountain Development Council has four hundred and fifty families right now on their waitlist for affordable housing. We have twenty-four women, eighteen of which have children, on our waitlist for shelter. Habitat has two hundred families waiting in queue to build their forever home. That's a total of four hundred and thirty families on just our three waitlists waiting for safe, dignified, and affordable housing. The project you have in front of you is a hundred and thirteen doors. I like to remind our decision-makers that last year, our Helena School District reported that nearly four hundred children were identified as insecurely housed. As the Executive Director of YWCA Helena, it is my job to analyze that data just a little bit and tell you that if a family had three children per household, which is quite high for an insecurely housed family, that's a hundred and thirty-three households that our school district said are living insecurely housed. National data tells me that eighty percent of single head of household, of those households are female-led. Seventy percent of those are families that have substance use or mental health disorders in their family, and those guys have kiddos. That's a hundred and thirty-three families if you figure that's three kids per household. That means a hundred and six of those families are female-led and have three hundred and nineteen children. Right now, I have twenty-four rooms, eighteen can house children. Our shelter currently provides recovery, therapeutic care, care for children, and extra wraparound care for vulnerable families. Our biggest challenge, though, is when our families graduate our programs and they're ready to move into our community, there are no housing options for them. What could be a twelve-month program then turns into a twenty-four to thirty-six month program. Women who are ready for a place like Rocky Mountain Development Council subsidized and affordable housing don't have a place to move, and they are taking up emergency space for the population that I just described. We need more affordable housing. Our project that we have before you, I will admit, is a drop in the bucket. YWCA's part of this project is twenty to twenty-five high-efficiency apartment complex to move our graduates that will offer supportive transitional housing and then move them on to a place that what RMDC will offer. We're asking you to help us purchase the land and develop the land. The above land costs for the partners are being planned for and fundraised for. Each partner will operate there prior to the project. The land will be placed in trust for YWCA and Habitat and keep those homes affordable forever. I think you'll find that this project meets all four of the priorities that you just heard about, that the commission that you have for external applications and the use of ARPA dollars. I encourage this body to support this innovative and reproducible project and put a thumbprint of the city on solutions for affordable housing. It's an opportunity to be an example to our future funders, our future funders, who are very excited about partnering with all of the partners in this vision and sharing it with other communities as a solution to their housing needs. We have an opportunity and we should take it. Thanks for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Gersky. Are there any other public comment?
Mayor Proton, I see no other hands raised. I do have one written public comment if I could read it into the record. This is actually as it pertains to the conversation regarding the service line discussion from earlier. From Scott Rasnap, I would like to submit a comment in support of keeping the programs, though not the fees in place. That is all I have for written public comment.
Thank you. And we did get an email from Mr. Rasnap during the meeting. Okay, great. So we will go ahead and move on to our last agenda item, which is the zoning regulations. Um, okay, great. So we will go ahead and move on to our last agenda item, um which is the zoning regulations. Is Mr. Brink going to present this or Ms. Ray?
Mayor Pro Time Commissioners, you were lunch with me.
No, great.
Um, in the interest of every time, since I know that we're approaching six o'clock, um, I will try to keep things brief. Uh. Little bit of history on this project. Um, I've gotten involved more recently, um, since Director Brink has joined our team. Uh, but this project goes all the way back to January twenty twenty. Um, unsurprisingly, uh, even though they got a really good head start on that. And the first point of counting recommendations by twelve twenty twenty. Following a bunch of public work sessions and other listening sessions in the community, um. Things that have happened in the past couple of years reared their head and took this thing off course. Um, so in the spring of this year. The city attorney's office were able to revisit the whole discussion and start. Looking at what the edits to the ordinances affected would look like. And um, I should pad this off by saying that. What is being amended here is proposed to be amended are um chapters two and thirty eight of Title eleven in the zoning code. Um, so. We had those ordinances drafted in the spring of this year and returned back to the uh planning division. Um, subsequent to that, the HCC of the, I want to say, late summer is when they reached out to the city. Um, that our codes actually are far more restrictive. Um, regarding to childcare provisions for the numbers of children that can be in care. Um, with our different use types for different types of facilities. Um, so that. Raised the urgency of actually moving some of these housekeeping changes that have been getting worked on for a few years forward to you now. Um, so that that is essentially where we are today. Um, these changes, again, they just, they're, it's housekeeping, it's helping to reduce redundancies. Um, it provides a little more clarity for people within some of those definitions. Uh, it creates a little more consistency with state statute um and other sections of our codes. Um, and it helps to modernize things. We create these types that we're seeing more of within our community. So I do want to also just note that this does not include changes that are coming down the pike. For recreational marijuana. Those are still under consideration by the zoning commission. We are going to have more work sessions related to that, but really. Because of the urgency with the dire need of families to get kids in daycare and. Um, making providers seem hamstrung by what we have in our code restricted them beyond what the state would allow for. Um, we saw a need to try and move this forward sooner. Um, so that is what is before you. I'm happy to talk through some of those changes if you would like me to.
I think maybe if there's comments or questions and then we can look back.
Sure.
Um, are there comments or questions on? Well, I had two. Um, the first one was on the food trucks. One question I had, so um, one of the things I love about Helena is that a number of our neighborhoods really love block parties. Um, and from what I can tell, I think that food trucks might not be permitted. Um. In in some residential areas and I I'm wondering if there's a way that we. If that's something um that maybe we could, I I don't want to be restrictive when. You know, we have a block party and someone wants to bring a food truck.
Certainly, um, uh, Mayor Pretend Commissioners, I think that in that instance, what you'd be looking at, I'm trying to. Like through the red line.
I'm looking at page five of the ordinance and five twenty two of the packet.
So the, I'm trying to find where we have the temporary use section.
Okay.
Of the table, because I think that that is actually where those types of events start coming to play.
Okay.
Uh, I know we have many throughout the neighborhood here on the left side and elsewhere in the community. Um, so I think in those instances, it would be uh they'd be dealing with Director Knopf's apartment on closures for the streets and. Getting all the firming in place and it should allow for that type of event to happen. What you see here for what is where food trucks are permitted mirrors what we have told historically. Um, since well before I started with the city over seven years ago, where food trucks may operate, which is outside of residential areas.
Okay.
The exception being the residential office and our four districts where they do allow for certain compatible commercial uses there. So. Uh, staff and so the commission felt that that was appropriate place to also allow them.
Okay.
Um, but yes, I think in the instance of talking about those one off. Um, temporary uses of those public events that it would be a different situation and it would relate back to that.
Okay, great. And then in the instance of. Um, you know, events at Memorial Park or Centennial Park that would be happening through urban. Current process. Okay, great. And then my other question was just on, it's page fifteen. Um, of the strike through ordinance and page five thirty two of the agenda. Um, the part of Alex that defines um education. So what this is, I don't want to be nitpicky, but just something to think about. It might be worthwhile for us to think about maybe being consistent with um how MCA. Defines schools. Um, it looks a little bit different in every community. Because some some communities, um, you know, pre K through six is elementary other. And I saw that's twenty six five oh one in MCA, and I think it it would be worthwhile to. Maybe. Match MCA a little more closely. Um, and then also, um. Uh, ensure that. MCA does not allow for the state to contribute to pre K or preschool. But there are a number of, um, I would not be one bit surprised in the near future if we have a situation where Helena Public School says. Or or even a nonprofit school says that we are providing pre K through. Five or pre K through six. And I don't want, I mean, I I'd hate for us to get hung up on because our definitions were. Maybe um not consistent with where MCA defines schools.
Uh, Mayor Pretend Commissioners, I um just want to note, I am, I thank you for bringing it up. I wasn't aware of that. I don't know if other staff in the planning division have been aware of the fact that there's a discrepancy with what's proposed. Um, I think that there was the intention, and I apologize because the two planners that kicked this whole project off uh are no longer with the city. So I I can't speak for all of the history around this, but I think that they were just trying to create a little clarity um based on the intensity of the type of school use to say that we. Um, the city zoning commission are most comfortable with allowing these different types of levels of. Educational facilities in different areas because it was just so broadly worded previously. Um, so certainly, I don't know if your your direction would be to have us check for the consistency with MCA prior to this. Or if you would like us to look at that before Monday's hearing or.
I I mean, it's, I would follow your lead. I just think that it. And that it's not something we need to worry about right now, so we could always amend it, but I had just given, um. Given trends and I would not be surprised if there's something that comes to us in the next five years that's opening, you know. Potentially an educational institution that could impact this or add, you know.
I would say, Mayor Pretending Commissioners, with um. Any area within our zoning code, it's a living and breathing document and should be revisited and altered as needed as things change. So. Um, I I will state that uh we can certainly investigate it. Um, next year, obviously, we have to get recreational marijuana into our zoning code. Um, and there might be one or two other additional housekeeping fixes, such as what you're suggesting that can be brought forward at that time, since we're already going to be making. Additional changes to chapter two. Um, so perhaps that can be included at that time. Um, and that the proposed language can serve as sort of a bridge to getting there down the line.
I think that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and also too, we've got the legislature showing up in January, so there might be some changes with regards to. Definitions or funding of pre K, a different type of education system. So. Well, yeah, right. So but we we'll see what the the governor's office has to say, but um. With their budget and what the legislature wants to do, but uh it's good to know that we can make those some amendments if maybe. Um, that it is a living and breathing document. So thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment?
Mayor Pro Time Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Okay, any other um final comments or questions from the commission? Okay, and with that, we are adjourned.